We are now live. Madam Chair, would you please call the meeting to order?
Okay, at 6:30 I call this meeting of the Arapahoe County Planning Commission on September 1st, 2020 to order, and we will now call the roll.
Chair Rick?
Yes.
Chair Protem Latsis? Did not see her join the meeting. Commissioner Brockelman?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Saul?
Present.
Commissioner Sauvay?
Present.
Commissioner Wolman?
Present.
Show six members present with Chair Protem Latsis absent currently. I will send an email to see if there's technical difficulties. My most recent email from last week indicated she had planned to attend the meeting. Good evening, Commissioners, staff, citizens, and guests. I am Jason Reynolds with Arapahoe County Planning, and I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's online meeting of the Planning Commission. We are streaming this meeting on our website, arapahoe.gov.com, and the agenda will be handled in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. You may stream the meeting on our website or call in to participate. Please note that the website broadcast is delayed by 20 to 30 seconds, so if you would like to speak regarding any public hearing items, please use the call-in number. To participate live via phone, call 719-569-5048, and when prompted, enter the conference ID number, which is 892-440-540, followed by the pound sign. All presentation PowerPoints are available on our website, so even if you participate by telephone, you can still download the PowerPoints and follow along with the presenters. Chair Rick, please proceed with approval of the minutes.
Okay, under General Business Items, we are here to consider for approval the August 18th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. If you have any changes you want to make to the minutes, please include those changes in your motion, and I will accept a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, one moment. I just would like to note for the record that it appears that Commissioner Latsis has joined the meeting. Commissioner Latsis, can you confirm that?
Yes, I have. I apologize for being late. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe the chair had just called for a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with just a couple of modifications.
Please proceed.
Page one, it is the last full paragraph on page one, which starts with Ms. Sauvay. The last sentence, she felt she could make an impartial, it should be decision, it's right now it's listed as plural decisions. Additionally, on page four of eight, first paragraph, last line, it should read, and I'll start from the beginning of the sentence before that, well, it's a really long sentence. We'll just start from a couple lines up. Pocket park in the future if the units would be for sale or rentals. Sound insulation as part of construction standards, and if the builder would be implementing, I think the word is any, A-N-Y, green standards. And those are the only changes I have.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Wolman with suggested changes and corrections on page one and page four. Do we have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Latsis. I second.
Commissioner Latsis has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Mr. Reynolds, then please call the roll.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Saul?
Aye.
Commissioner Sauvay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolman?
Aye.
Chair Protem Latsis?
Aye.
Chair Rick?
Aye.
The minutes are approved on a vote of 720. We will now move on to public hearings, and the public is invited to participate in the public hearings this evening. If you would like to comment on public hearing items, please call 719-569-5048. When prompted, enter the conference ID, 892-440-540, followed by the pound sign. I will call on individual telephone numbers after the Planning Commission Chair opens the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Planning Commission on this topic after the staff presentation. Some of the public hearing items tonight are quasi-judicial in nature. In order to afford all parties due process under law, the Planning Commission members must be fair and impartial in deciding whether those applications should be approved, approved with conditions, or denied. In making that determination, each member of the Planning Commission must consider the record, which includes the staff recommendation, the applicant presentation, public comment presented during the hearing, and other written public comments offered before or during the hearing. Under law, Planning Commission must evaluate this proposal based entirely upon the record and the criteria established under the Land Development Code, which are highlighted in the staff report. It is important that each Planning Commission member remain objective and capable of considering information offered into the record during this hearing. Does any Planning Commission member believe that he or she is incapable of evaluating and voting on the application in an unbiased and objective manner, believe that they may have a conflict of interest, or have any other matter that he or she would like to disclose prior to proceeding with the public hearing for any of the public hearing items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we can move on to the chair's introduction to these public hearing items.
Right, we have two public hearing items tonight. There's an interesting echo.
Yes, I will mute. We had a caller who called via phone, and muting that seemed to solve the problem.
Very good. The Planning Commission will now consider a combined public hearing for both items, case number GDP 18-007 and PP 18-001, the Sky Ranch General Development Plan and Neighborhood A and Phase Two Preliminary Platte. Molly Orchid Larson with Arapahoe County Planning is the staff presenter. Mrs. Orchid Larson, please begin.
Good evening, Commissioners. Molly Orchid Larson, Senior Planner with the Public Works Department. The county attorney has reviewed the public notice and has determined that the applicant has met all of the public requirements, thereby establishing jurisdiction for these applications. What's before you this evening is the Sky Ranch General Development Plan and Preliminary Platte for Neighborhoods A, C, D, E, and F. Neighborhood B is not part of these applications in review since it was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2018 and is currently being developed. The applicant, who is Pure Cycle Corporation, is proposing a mixed-use community to be located south of I-70 and between North Haysmont and North Monahan roads, and will consist of a maximum of 2,901 units and 2.09 million commercial square feet on approximately 775 acres. The property is zoned MUPD. This development will contain single-family residential, including detached and attached, multifamily, commercial, light and heavy industrial, and open space. Parcels have been set aside for a fire station, a rec center, school site, open space/parks, and oil and gas development. The general development plan and preliminary platte consist of five neighborhoods, which are further broken down into planning areas that contain a specific land use and/or housing type. A revised plan set for the general development plan and an amended engineering staff report were provided for this hearing in response to an updated interchange study for the 1601 process. This updated study evaluates interim and build-out improvements at the airport interchange along I-70. The applicant will be discussing this in further detail in his presentation, so if you have any questions, you might want to wait until Mark Harding presents. Staff recommends both these applications to be approved based on the findings in their staff reports. The applicant is here tonight to present his project and to go through and go into it into more detail. He does have a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'll now turn it over to the applicant unless you have questions for me.
Are there any questions from anybody at this point? All right, hearing none. We will hear from the applicant, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's a delight to be with you this evening to present our updated GDP plan. On the slide presentation, and Molly, I think, will drive on the slide presentation, but what I would like to do is to spend a little bit of time overviewing the project, kind of talk a little bit about some of the key features for the project, utilities and transportation, talk a little bit about our process, maybe introduce a little bit of our team, and then take any questions from you or the public as part of this presentation. You can leave this slide there, I guess if you want to do the, yeah, there you go. So, as Molly has mentioned, we'll kind of take these two together. I just have the one presentation, which will really detail both the general development plan and corresponding preliminary platte for our project here. First thing I want to do, if you take to the next slide, Molly, slide two, we'll introduce our team. On the line with me today is the head of our land planning team, Alan Cunningham, who's with PCS Group, and he's been diligently involved with this project for probably more than 15 years, dating back to its original version back in 2004, so he's extremely knowledgeable. If you have any really difficult questions, I'll probably refer those to Alan. And then just kind of give you a brief introduction, while they may not be on the call with us today, we have really a consistent team with us on this project. We have the same civil engineering group, CBL engineers, our transportation engineers, LCS transportation consultants, as well as our district council, all really have been involved with this project for more than 15 years. So, we're very privileged to have the continuity of our executive team and our land planning team. Next slide, slide three. What I'd like to do is probably give you a bit of an introduction into the developer, who we are. Pure Cycle is a wholesale water, wastewater service provider and a land development company. Many of you have been on the Planning Commission before, we've appeared before you before, really discussing a lot of our activities in Arapahoe County. We live and work in Arapahoe County. We provide water services to the county as a whole and to a number of the developments in Arapahoe County. As a water provider, it's kind of part of our DNA effort, so I want to speak a little bit about water, because as you take a look at any master plan community, one of the most important elements of that master plan community is to make sure you have adequate water and wastewater services for that. And as part of that, Pure Cycle really has vertically integrated itself, where we own all the assets to provide water and wastewater service to governmental entities such as Arapahoe County and to end-use customers such as our residents out at Sky Ranch. That includes water rights, wholesale domestic and irrigation water, infrastructure that withdraws, treats, stores, deliver water. We collect wastewater, we store, we treat it. We reuse that wastewater as part of our Reg 84 irrigation system, and then we own the additional property, which is before you today, which is about 780 acres, 775 acres, which will be the continuation of the entire Sky Ranch master plan community. Next slide, four. Just a brief introduction about water. As a 30-year water, wastewater provider in Arapahoe County, we take stewardship of our most valuable resource as one of our foremost matters in our business model. We use, recycle, and reuse our water supplies, so we're committed to a sustainable environmentally sensitive water and wastewater system. We have dual distribution systems for domestic and irrigation, which greatly reduces the amount of aggregate water from the environment. We treat our wastewater using one of the most advanced wastewater treatment facilities that we have just recently commissioned at Sky Ranch in our opening phase. We have all the latest technologies for evapotransport, for irrigation, leak detection, automatic meter reading systems, and really incentives to encourage our customers to continue to conserve our water resources. If we move to slide five, what I'd do is give you kind of a geographic orientation to where we are. We are about two miles east of the E-470, I-70 interchange off of exit 292, off of Interstate 70. As Molly had mentioned, we're the airpark interchange, which is along the Monahan alignment. The project has been, if you take a look at, we're about 11 miles east of downtown, about four miles directly south of Denver International Airport. We move to the next slide, slide six, please. Talk a little bit about where our water supplies come from. This map is really a map that shows the Water Infrastructure Supply Efficiency Project, known as WISE, which is a combined project with the City of Aurora, Denver Water, and 11 water providers in Arapahoe and Douglas Counties. So, those will give you, the colored versions are all the various water providers, a little bit of orientation about how our particular project, both Sky Ranch, which you can kind of see in the middle there, along the I-70 corridor, as well as the Lowry Range, which is the large portion of our service area, relate to all of the individual storage aspects, and how our WISE system interconnects with all of our development and service areas. If you move to the next slide, slide seven, please. A little bit of history, the site has developed onsite water, so we've taken a transmission line that goes from our supplies to interconnect our surface water, our renewable surface water supplies, our regional WISE water supplies, the integration in the future of all of our super surface water storage reservoirs, and the drought-resistant groundwater wells, all interconnected to provide a uniform, sustainable, environmentally developed water supply for the project. We have an existing wastewater treatment plant on the site, which has 100% reuse aspects to it, so we take 100% of the wastewater from the community. We'll treat that to a highly advanced stage. We have onsite storage at Sky Ranch that will be used for storing that water for irrigation purposes, to meet all the open space park irrigation water demands on that, to use and reuse our fully usable and fully consumable water supplies. We have fully developed wholesale water transmission lines that can deliver all of the water to the facility, so as we got the facilities constructed today, we have about capacity for 2,500 single-family equivalents. As we continue to expand for build-out, we'll add incremental stages to wastewater treatment and water supply to meet the demand as that rolls on. If you move to the next slide, slide eight, please. So, turning our attention, this application is really an update to our current zoning, dating back to 2004. This update consolidates multiple PDP filings, which occurred over a number of years, starting in 2004, with some additional land acreages added and processed in 2006 and 2007. Pure Cycle as a company picked up the property in about 2010. We held the property for a number of years, and then really looked to how this property would position itself with its existing zoning, current market trends, and kind of what we were looking for out of a master plan community in the corridor. If you move to the next slide, slide nine. This will kind of give you overall site logistics. Remain largely intact from the original zoning. So, the original zoning on your left is kind of the formation dating back to 2004 with the combination of some of the other applications in 2006 and 2007. The proposed GDP planning area is over to your right, so you can kind of see the mechanics of it are largely intact. We've changed some of the roadway transportation corridor alignments to be a little bit more logically oriented. We still have commercial that'll be on the north side of the property up near the interstate. We have a large amount of residential, open space interconnectivity, you know, school sites, rec centers, drainage detention areas, and then just kind of a phasing of the overall program. On the next slide, we can drill down in some of the specifics as to what the differences are between our existing zoning and this updated zoning. So, towards the left of that, the columns and the boxes there will really indicate the prior zoning. From 2004 to the right will be the updated zoning, and as Molly had indicated, we have zoning, existing zoning on it for up to about 4,800 units. This particular zoning is for about 2,900 units, and that 2,900 units excludes the existing 506 units that are currently under construction, so we have about 3,400 total residential units on this. So, we downzoned the residential units, largely some of the multifamily that were previously part of the plan from 2004, and then took a look at some of the commercial land, and we increased the area of commercial land up around the interstate, so we're upzoning some of that commercial land from about 1.3 million square feet to about 2.1 million square feet. So, while this also delineates neighborhood by neighborhood, some of those changes to it, it really, I think, is still consistent with the original applications from 2004 and some of the goals and opportunities set for the county and for the development over the past 15 years. If we'll advance to the next slide, slide 11. This will kind of drill down in some of the more detailed aspects of this. The area in blue there, which is currently under construction, is our Phase One. Now, that's what we define as Neighborhood B. It currently is 506 units. It's under construction. We have about 200 residents on the site. We're constructing homes that are home builder partners in that, are three national home builders. We have Richmond American, Taylor Morrison, and KB Homes, and they're each combined doing about 25 new starts a month. So, it is one of the most successful master plan communities in the Denver metropolitan area, and it is the most affordable master plan community in the Denver metropolitan area, something that we're very proud of. The next phase there, which is going to be kind of the greenish, light greenish color, is gonna add another 950 acres. That will be a more detailed application before you shortly with our site development plan, but that's going to be about another 950 units that we add to that. And then we have some very detailed discussions going on with the county as applicant with CDOT on interchange improvements and transportation improvements to accommodate the entire build-out of the development. Currently, we are limited to 774 units, which will carry forward in this GDP application until such time as we get a permit for interim improvements, phased interim improvements at the interchange that will incrementally increase the capacity of the interchange and then serviceability for the development. And we're currently in that process with Arapahoe County as the applicant to CDOT, together with other developers along the interstate, and then we'll engage other governmental jurisdictions, whether that's going to be City of Aurora or Adams County, as part of this overall interchange analysis. But we do have a very active and robust plan with the county, and we have been really working on this plan for a couple of years now, so that's one of the things that has been a very detailed element of this application. Let me move to the next slide, which really kind of will kind of draw down a closure to this and summarize what our GDP updates, really the existing PDP zoning into the county's new GDP, SDP, ASP format. So, we're moving away from what was preliminary platte and then final platte format, so the new three-step program, and then, you know, really working with the site logistics, updating the number of units, the design of it, the transportation corridors, and all of the elements of the feature to bring really what was a 15-year-old plan current. So, this plan has been in production for a couple of years. I'd like to thank staff for their dedication and the tenacity to bring this to a very good and thoughtful plan for the county and something that I think both the county and we would be very proud of. So, with that, I would open it up for any questions.
Yes, this is Commissioner Sauvay, and I do have a question. When Molly presented at the very beginning, she said the parcel has also been set aside for recreation center, fire station, school, water storage facilities, and oil and gas development. And in your overview, you didn't mention that. Can you elaborate on why would that be a part of this project?
The oil and gas part, the last part?
Yes.
So, we do have active, we own the minerals beneath the property as well, and these minerals are pooled in. If you look at this plan, the areas that we have set aside for oil and gas development, we were pretty thoughtful, we tried to be pretty thoughtful about those areas and tried to incorporate them on kind of the areas that would be not necessarily conducive for residential development. So, Molly's got the pointer on one of them, that site and the below site. So, those sites are the only two sites that we have available for those. The oil and gas operators have drilled one well on that site, which is a 10,000-foot lateral, which extends towards the west. And so, what we buffered is the oil and gas. We buffered that through open space and water utility features. So, on the first site to the north, that one right there, we have our water storage reservoirs, or raw water storage reservoir, and our reuse reclaimed water reservoir, so that will buffer that particular site. And then on the one to the south, we buffer that with some usable open space areas to kind of give that a separation of any of the oil and gas facilities from any other residential uses or other land uses of that.
I also have an add-on question, which is, and I don't know a lot about oil and gas development, but would this production or this activity also include fracking, or how does that, could you speak to that?
You bet, you bet. Typically, they do. So, you know, we, while we have leased the minerals and we provided some spacing for them, you know, the operators themselves kind of determine how they want to develop them, how they want to drill the wells, how many wells they want to drill, and so we do have agreements with them that really call into detail how many wells would be allowed on each site. I think there's up to maybe a dozen wells on each site that would be allowed for that. They do drill them, they do frac those. In large part, a lot of these oil and gas wells are going to be done in the next two or three years, which will be maybe five to seven years in advance of any of the residential activity out in that area. So, we've tried to find a balance between mixing and blending a master plan community such as this, together with natural resource minerals development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read off the other Planning Commission members' names to see if you have any questions for staff or our developer, Mr. Harding. Mr. Brockelman?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Harding. Mainly, the first one, which is always the biggie, is the water side of it.
Yep.
So, I heard a partial here, and maybe I didn't hear it all the way, but you have all the water procured to where you're at right now. Now, my question is, you said that there would be expansion with it. Do you have the commitments of water for this full build-out?
We do. Thank you for that question. We do. Thank you for that question. What I was referencing is, we have, what is kind of the physical capacity, how much water we have in our treatment capacity, in our delivery capacity, in our wastewater treatment capacity, and we expand that brick and mortar. But from a water rights standpoint, we have about 28,000 acre-feet of water, which will be a blend of renewable surface water, regional project water from the Wise Project and Denver Basin groundwater supplies. And this project needs a total of about 2,500 acre-feet. So it's about 10% of our overall portfolio, call it 12% of our overall portfolio. So we're very, we're blessed to be a water developer as part of this. We're kind of unusual because we're a water developer that became a or we're a water utility that became a developer rather than a developer that tried to become a water provider.
Yeah, sometimes the infrastructure is after the fact.
I will tell you, one of the, one of the getting, you know, as a water utility manager and developer, you know, one of the things that I have found about development is it is significantly less complicated than the water business.
Well, we had a little preliminary discussion before everybody came on about you can do anything that you want to do, but you can't do anything without water.
You know, interestingly, this project was one of the first projects that came out in 2004 when the state, the legislature tied to couple land use and water availability. And so, you know, I've been involved in the project since then and kind of proud of how we've been able to manage that. But the county was very responsible. And I really believe this was the first olive out of the jar when that was passed. And you know, it ultimately led to kind of one of the reasons why we ended up owning the property, because we ended up tying a water supply to a particular property before we owned it. And then, you know, the property kind of went into bankruptcy as the recession came into it. And so we acquired it because our water supply was already tied to the project. So water has a very rich history with this project.
And one other question. What is the build-out schedule of this thing and final development? Has that been established yet?
Well, if I had that crystal ball, you and I would probably be retired.
Well, it's your plan, you know, 15 years, is it 20?
Anecdotally, I can tell you that you know, the first phase of this, the first 500 homes, when we negotiated our contracts with our builders, was supposed to be a five-year absorption, and it's been a two-year absorption. So I think it's been extremely well received. There's many, many reasons for that. You know, and I, any number of them being that I think we're in the right target market. I think this is an entry-level product. Homes out there are starting at around 350. It's stunning to me that that's a definition of an entry-level home in Denver. But there's not very many homes that you can buy in Denver at that price point. And we're probably recognized as one of the highest quality entry-level master plan communities in Denver right now. If that continues, you know, that same level of absorption, this is still a 10-year project.
Okay, okay. And actually, one last final question, I promise. What's the, is there kind of any kind of date or timeframe for the airpark interchange construction?
Yes. So we have to have that, we can construct another 224-ish homes in our second phase before the improvements must be made. So what we're working on together with the county is we would, we are actually in the 1601 for a permit from CDOT for the interim improvements. We hope to have that within six to nine months. We can be moving and grading some dirt at that same time period, and then just add that as part of the construction. So if the process moves in that same timeline, we would be constructing the interim improvements probably within nine to 18 months to make sure that as we flow from 506 up to 774 up to 1450, we have a logical progression of all that infrastructure.
Okay, all right. Those were my questions. Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns for Commissioner Miller?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Saul?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Savae, do you have any additional questions?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Wallman?
I do have a couple of questions. So I, when reading through Molly's report, I kind of stopped when I saw the conversation regarding the libraries. So since obviously the fire department needs to have a station because of the size of the development for public safety and being close to where there may be an issue within the community, I was thinking to myself, well, okay, where is the nearest library? Do you have any idea whether the adjacent community being developed in the city of Aurora has a library within that development or you know, just more east, you know, out in Byers or Bennett? I just don't know where the nearest library is. And to me, that's kind of important.
You bet. And I don't know where the nearest library is. I do know that we are in the Arapaho Library District, and we have set, we have about 330,000 square feet of civic uses, of which a library would be one of those civic uses. So what we hope to do is work with the library district to find a site that would be suitable for them, work together with the library, perhaps the rec center district, as well as the school system to find joint purpose for a library and see if there's an opportunity to get that centrally located for the community, because I share your passion for libraries. You know, I think that they are a great community asset. They're a great community gathering place. And so, you know, we're very interested to make that available and then work with the district to work within the confines of their district boundaries.
That's great news, because that was a concern of mine, knowing the build-out size you were looking at for that community. It just seemed that maybe initially, I don't know whether you know, people at the very beginning perhaps were like, well, we'll deal with it at a later time, but it would be great if you could do some outreach to the Arapaho Library District to kind of fill them in on what your plans are, because you're already developing a portion of the master plan community. So I'm glad to hear that and just encourage you to reach out to them sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that it for now, Commissioner Wallman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Chair Protem Latsis, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I have two questions. So building on what Commissioner Savae asked about, I, you know, looking at the sites and the adjacent residential, can you tell us what the distance between those pads for oil and gas are to the closest residential?
You bet. So the oil and gas sites that we have authorized there will be on the far eastern border, which will be along the Hazmont roadway alignment. And those are going to be, I think, more than 1,200, it might be even more than 1,600 feet from the roadway alignment, and the residential units would be on the roadway alignment. So we have taken into consideration kind of an expanded buffer for those sites.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was, I believe it was back in 2019, we received a presentation from the county regarding their new initiatives as far as oil and gas monitoring, you know, the development of it, adjacency to residential, you know, and you know, kind of an assessment of what's happened both in Arapaho County and, you know, neighboring counties. Has there been any review or coordination with the oil and gas representatives at the county regarding your new GDP?
Oh, you bet. I speak with Diane all the time. I think she uses us as a resource on a lot of the things that the operators are looking for, some of the, you know, setbacks requirements as a developer. So, you know, we are kind of uniquely positioned as someone that does provide water to the oil and gas industry. We use our, some of our raw water supplies for that. So I have a familiarity with operators on that side, as well as a developer, to make sure that we have a nice land plan coexisting with that type of use for this property. I've met with a number of the county commissioners through the years to articulate how the oil and gas and the fracking in general coexist with water development through the Denver Basin aquifers. And, you know, what we see as the protection measures that COGCC has put in place on those and you know, really feel comfortable with a lot of those regulatory requirements that they put in place. So I'd say I probably are a little bit more familiar with oil and gas than the standard development, just because it's close to some of the activity that we do. And it's also something that we work with the industry in terms of water supply.
Well, great, thank you. That, I'm glad to hear that there is coordination here, because we had a big discussion around what goes in first and how close does the other one get to it?
Yeah, I mean, in an ideal world, you always want oil and gas in before the residential, and that the residential does, you know, kind of know that as a buyer coming into that area. They see that, they have that, you know, understanding that it's not dumped on them after the fact. So that's kind of why we've incentivized and really located our sites where our sites are.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, are there any other questions from the planning commission at this time? Well, then I will ask one of my own. I had an opportunity to visit your development this past weekend, and I guess the part of the staff report that jumped out for me was the comments from the sheriff's department regarding the need for law enforcement, especially as more dense development comes online. I go through your Neighborhood B, and I realize that is your single-family area, but what's coming is going to be much more dense. So I have a question about will you have any land for a substation there and how how is that going to be handled? I mean, you're surrounded by Aurora. The people will probably have an Aurora mailing address, which always leads to confusion.
It does.
And my other question is regarding access to the development. There's a lot of talk about the interchange, but ultimately on the southern portion, will Jewel be connecting through to come in on the south? Or could you address that, please?
Yeah, and so I'll take the last part first on terms of the some of the transportation connectivity corridors other than through the interstate. Sixth Avenue is kind of in the middle of the property, so that's, that's a thorough, yeah, that's where you see the Sixth Avenue extension. That ultimately does get extended both east and west. To the west, it gets extended to connect to the city of Aurora. To the east, it would get connected to the Prosper Development. Down from that will be, on the bottom of that next section, will be the Alameda Extension. And that again will go both east and west. If it goes west, it'll interconnect to Powhatan and a lot of the infrastructure and the local roads through the city of Aurora. So transportation-wise, CDOT likes that connectivity, because they don't want to drive everything to the interstate. They want to have everybody have options other than the interstate. On the sheriff's department, you know, again, that would be another use of that civic use that we've got set aside. I think that that would be a great use for that. You know, we have not had an outreach to the sheriff's department to determine if they have a need or an interest for some, set aside for some land on that, but we most certainly would welcome that opportunity.
Okay, great, thank you. Any final questions from the planning commission? Okay, we will now open the public hearing, and our moderator will call on individual telephone numbers to participate in the hearing. And as a reminder, this is a combined public hearing for both the Sky Ranch General Development Plan and Preliminary Plat.
Thank you. We do currently have one caller on the line. And callers, if you'd like to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourself. So caller with the last four digits, 8832, if you'd like to participate in the hearing, please press star six and unmute yourself. You will have three minutes to comment, and please state your name and location for the record. And the caller with the calling from area code 307, if you would like to talk, you can press star six to unmute yourself if you'd like to participate in this hearing. Give you another couple moments.
This is Jim and Kim Seiler, adjacent landowners, and we have no comments at this time.
All right, thank you very much. That is the only caller we have.
Okay, so we don't need to answer any questions, because there were no comments. So I guess we will now close the public hearing and bring the items for back to the planning commission for a motion and discussion. And if there are any additional questions before we call for the motion on the general development plan or preliminary plat. If anybody has any questions, now is the time. I guess everybody is content. So I will accept a motion regarding the proposed general development plan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. This is Commissioner Wallman. In the case GDP 18-007, Sky Ranch Neighborhoods A, C, D, E, and F General Development Plan, the planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to conditions 1 through 5.
Right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Wallman. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Brockelman seconds.
The motion has been seconded by Commissioner Brockelman. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Reynolds, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Saul?
Aye.
Commissioner Savae?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallman?
Aye.
Chair Protem Latsis?
Aye.
Chair Rick?
Aye.
The motion on the general development plan passes on a vote of 720.
Okay, we will now accept a motion regarding the proposed preliminary plat. Make a motion?
Madam Chair, again, this is Commissioner Wallman. I'd like to make a motion regarding the preliminary plat. Considering the findings and other information provided herein, staff recommends approval of case number PP 18001, Sky Ranch Neighborhoods A, C, D, and E, E and F preliminary plat, subject to conditions 1 through 4.
All right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Wallman. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Latsis seconds.
Commissioner Latsis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Reynolds, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Saul?
Aye.
Commissioner Savae?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallman?
Aye.
Chair Protem Latsis?
Aye.
Chair Rick?
Aye.
The motion on the preliminary plat passes on a vote of 720.
Well, thank you all. This concludes our public hearing items. And my notes here say that our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for September 15th. Are there any other staff announcements?
This is Jason Reynolds, just to let you know that we're expecting the September 15th public hearing will be regarding a proposed gas line proposed for the area around Cherry Creek State Park in unincorporated Arapaho County, and it continues into Centennial and Greenwood Village, but this would only cover the Arapaho County portion. And that's the only item we have scheduled for September 15th so far.
Well, I would like to thank all the Well, I would like to thank all the commissioners for attending tonight, and...
My thanks as well.
Yes, and I guess at this point, our meeting is adjourned. Until next time.
Thanks all.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, ending the live stream.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.